October 7, 2019 will come to order and the clerk will please call the roll.
Calling the roll, Ms. Baker.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Tuma.
Here.
Mr. Gallagher, Mr. Gallagher is absent at the moment, Mr. Schron.
Here.
Ms. Conwell.
Present.
Mr. Jones, Mr. Jones is absent at the moment, Ms. Brown.
Here.
Ms. Stevens.
Present.
Ms. Simon, Ms. Simon is absent at the moment, Council President Brady. You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have anybody signed in?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. I would like to welcome everybody to the 20 to 21 budget hearings process. I would like to thank Council President Brady for affording me the significant leadership opportunity to lead this process. I would like to thank the administration for working with us during the budget process and providing council leadership with considerable advance information on the budget, information for which we're grateful. The schedule for today is that first, we're going to hear the strategic overview from our county executive and then Director Keenan is going to provide a more granular detailed overview and then she will present budget elements of several areas where we didn't feel we need specific departmental hearings. The budget books are expected to be distributed tomorrow, so you will have those shortly. After today's hearing, the departmental hearings will begin one week from tomorrow on Tuesday, October the 15th. Looking at the, how much we have to pack into a relatively limited number of meetings, we're asking departments to resist the temptation to make a general presentation on all the wonderful things that your departments do as important as we know those things are and instead to focus on what is in your budget request, what things are being added or deleted and what challenges you're currently facing. We request that you send electronic copies of your presentations to our clerk, Jean, in advance and she will prepare printed copies as needed and we ask you to also have them on the screen in front of us during the presentations. We're going to do our very best to come up with a budget that serves the county's needs well and that the executive and council fully agree upon. And with that, I would like to welcome our county executive to give the strategic overview.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. I am pleased to come before you today to present our proposed 2020-2021 budget. We're delivering a balanced budget. We also have proposed utilizing a small amount of reserves for targeted investments. What you have before you today is a substantive plan to address some of the most significant issues that our county faces. I want to say before I get into specifics that this budget could not have come together without the good work from members of my staff and from council leadership and council staff. We've worked diligently and collaboratively to come up with strong solutions that we believe will address some longstanding issues. I'd like to thank Council President Dan Brady and Finance and Budget Chair Dale Miller for their input and support. I'd like to thank Chief of Staff Bill Mason, Office of Budget and Management Director Maggie Keenan, and our chiefs and directors for their great help as well. A budget should reflect our priorities. When I look at a budget for any cycle, I ask myself, what is the work that we want to do and what is the work that we have to do? Despite consistently increasing costs, in this budget, we've been able to hold most of our programs as is. Our programs are working and we will continue to fund them. Two areas, though, need even more support and attention, even though we've already devoted many, many, many resources towards them. These two are our justice system, specifically our jail, and services for protecting our children. So let's start with criminal justice. I've said it before, but it bears repeating, we are fully committed to making the jail safe, both for the inmates and for our staff. We are making very strong progress on this front, but we need to do more and we must direct more funds to these efforts. Overcrowding is one of the biggest issues we face and we're not alone in this. Jails across the country struggle with this problem. Our budget increases support for strategies that will help reduce the population. I will say that we've made significant progress with the jail population numbers, which are now trending below 1,900 consistently. Just today, they're at 1,824. But we have to do more and better. We're committed to getting the population down to its rated capacity of 1,765. But it's not just about reducing the numbers. It's about keeping people who don't need to be in our jail out of jail. This budget funds a bail reform initiative that will reduce the number of inmates in the county jail who have been kept in jail simply because they cannot pay even a small bail bond. People who are not dangerous and are very likely to appear at their court dates should be allowed to remain in the community to keep their jobs and to stay connected with their families. These efforts will include additional resources for pretrial services and electronic monitoring. This budget also includes funds for diversion programming. Too many of our inmates struggle with mental health and addiction issues. In fact, the jail has become the default repository for those who are addicted or mentally ill. That's not the way it should be. The jail is no place for people who are struggling with mental illness or addiction. So I'm proposing funding to divert many of these individuals from the criminal justice system so they can get the treatment and services that they need to improve their lives and to stop them from cycling in and out of jail. Our drug courts do a great job of identifying and finding community supports for drug-addicted defendants. This budget adds support for an additional drug court. In addition to increased funding for bail reform and diversion programming designed to reduce our jail population, this budget also adds funds for additional correction officers at the jail. To improve safety for our inmates and staff and to reduce the use of red zoning, we must continue to add corrections officers. I'm pleased to say that as of last week, I'm informed that we were at 669. So we are making significant progress. But we must continue to ensure adequate funding for corrections staff, medical care, and structural improvements at the jail. And we're adding funds to hire additional sheriff deputies to provide inmate transportation as well as justice center security. I said at the beginning that there were two primary areas receiving extra resources in this budget. I've addressed the first. The second is children protective services. We've been experiencing a huge increase in the numbers of abuse, dependency, and neglect filings coming to the county. That in turn increases the need for resources to investigate and address these cases. This budget provides additional funds for staff for our Department of Children and Family Services. We are also seeking additional funds for the prosecutor's office and the public defender to add personnel to respond to these increasing numbers of child-related cases. Many of you are aware of the fact that we have record numbers of children in our custody and care. We're up to about 2,900, the most in a decade, and that's causing our costs for board and care to skyrocket. We're currently spending more than $54 million a year and we've added $6 million to the budget to take care of these growing numbers of children. We've accomplished all this and still presented a balanced budget by careful and responsible management. We've made a small draw on our reserves, but we're still at 29%, well above the mandated 25%. This budget will get us through the next two years in good shape. But I also want to briefly address the Health and Human Services levy, which ends next year and which relates to our budget and our priorities. The 2021 budget is based on the existing millage for the levy, but we need to examine this crucial source of funding for the health and welfare of our county residents. In order to make our Health and Human Services budget balanced, we continue to have to draw down reserves from this fund and that is not sustainable. As costs steadily rise, the current level of funding we have for Health and Human Services simply is not enough for the increasing needs we have as a county. I'll give you three examples. First, if we want to continue funding our UPK scholarships for three and four-year-olds throughout the county who otherwise could not afford a high-quality pre-K education, an education that would set them up for success throughout their lives, then we will need additional resources. Second, as I mentioned earlier, our costs for board and care for our record number of children in the foster care system are through the roof and they continue to grow. We can't ignore them, we have to take care of them. Our children deserve our support and that will require additional resources. Third, just as we are committed to supporting our youngest, we are also committed to supporting our eldest. Our population, like the population across the country, is aging. We are committed to giving our elder adults the support they need to live safely and independently and we need more funding to support the increased demand. So while this budget that I'm presenting to you is balanced, please know that I believe and I know council also believes that we will soon need to address the increased Health and Human Service needs of our county. Finally, I want to say this. The challenges our county faces are large, but they are not insurmountable. Together, we can help our residents live their best possible lives. Together, we can make Cuyahoga County a place where everyone has a chance to succeed and to thrive, no matter their zip code. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Executive, any questions by my colleagues? Okay, I'd just like to make a couple of comments. First, that I'm, I'm very pleased that in talking about the problems of the jail and criminal justice, that you not only dealt with the fact that we need additional funding for basic operations, but you also clearly put forward that we need significant structural changes to reduce the jail population, both for the benefit of that system and for the overall health and well-being of our community. And while I think the funding challenges are significant, I think the biggest challenges are structural, namely getting all the various players to work together to make the needed changes happen and that's somewhat outside of the scope of this particular hearing, but we, we have to do our part and provide the necessary resources. The second thing is with regard to the Health and Human Services levy, I would just remind all of my colleagues that unlike the situation we have with the general fund where the, the sales tax in particular provides some increase in revenue from year to year, the, the Health and Human Services levy basically does not because of the effect of House Bill 920. So we're faced with, with a fixed level of revenue until we change, change the millage. We have a fixed level of revenue, but every year the costs go up with inflation, plus we have the additional challenges of, of child welfare and the opiate crisis and such things as, as we've talked about. So, so the executive is correct that we're going to have to, to deal with the question of the Health and Human Services levy. We're currently on track to exhaust the entire balance in the Health and Human Services levy sometime during 2020. So, so it is, it is an immediate situation that we're facing. So, thanks again very much for that presentation and if, Ms. Conwell.
I'm through the chair to County Exec, Executive Buddhist. I was looking forward to hoping that in the budget book that you will have addressed the ERP funding that is going forward. You didn't have that in your, in your oversight that you just mentioned, but I'm, I know we can find efficiencies there for Health and Human Services and things of that nature. So I look forward to the budget book tomorrow and hopefully that, that the additional increases and costs that they're asking for is addressed in the budget as well because I know that's something that we've put a lot of money into and it will also yield in some nice dividends or efficiencies, I should say. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, with that, I would like to call forth Director Keenan to give us the detailed overview.
Good afternoon.
Maggie Keenan, Office of Budget Management. Feel free to interrupt me at any time, as usual. Before I start, if I may, I do want to acknowledge the staff in the Office of Budget Management, most of whom are sitting behind me this afternoon. This particular, but, any budget that's $2 billion takes some effort to put together when coordinating 40-some agencies. This one in particular was a bit challenging because we have old chart of accounts, new chart of accounts, and we created both and we had no system. So the old chart of accounts budget was created entirely by hand, which is not an easy task to do and it had to be checked then by hand, it was some 7,000 lines. And then we did create the new budget reports in our new ERP system as well, which is called BFM. But again, checking new reports, getting comfortable with the new system, it was a lot of effort and so I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that and thank them profusely for all their hard work and for keeping me calm, which was definitely not an easy task the last couple of days. Okay, so just getting started, most of council is aware of how the budget process has worked. I've talked about it a little bit as I've come forward through the quarterly updates, but I did just want to give a bit of an overview so that you know how we got to the point where we are today. The initial base budget was developed by OBM back in January of this year. We started significantly earlier than usual, not only because we knew we probably had an uphill battle system-wise, but also in recognition of the deficits that had been projected for the future years, we really wanted to give the agencies and departments a lot of time to be deliberate with their budget requests, to think about what they would cut if they had to cut. And we did ask them what they would cut if we were to cut 5% and 10%. And additionally, we opened up this year for the first time since, I think, like 2009, decision packages, which are requests for new funding. So we, we kind of did both. We asked them to cut, we asked them to think about what they would do if they had extra money available. So that's why we started earlier. The final base was distributed to the agencies in February. They returned it to us, that's blank, but they did return it to us, I believe, in July. And then from there, OBM reviewed everything, did its due diligence and made recommendations to the executive and the executive is now making his recommendations to you. And this is scheduled for first reading tomorrow evening, which is in compliance with county So the executive mentioned his specific priorities for the next two years. I just want to remind everyone that we are staying consistent with the strategic plan that the county adopted for a five-year period running through 2022. That plan has three overarching goals of economic growth and opportunity, fairness and equity, and a government that gets results. And we believe that this budget and particularly some of our new investments that we're proposing speak directly to these goals. The next slide details the additional funding that was added to the budget. Armin talked about this in kind of general statements so far, but this does have it detailed by agency and by program. I'm not planning on running through it line by line, I can if you'd want me to, but this does detail every agency that got additional funding and why. Everything on here is general fund with the exception of the diversion center, which is that second row, 2.5 million, but everything else is general fund.
So, Director.
Yes.
This is an important piece. I would like you to briefly go through it line by line.
Okay. And these are also discussed in a little bit more detail in the budget book that you'll get tomorrow. So the first one is a million-dollar investment in bail reform efforts. This is to reduce the incidence of overcrowding in the county jail, particularly for inmates that are predispositioned and can be outside of the jail and still coming to their court dates. For right now, this is in miscellaneous budget, just because we weren't entirely sure how the million is going to be allocated between the sheriff's office, common police court, who does most of the due diligence when they get defendants who present to the court. So, but there is a million dollars in the budget for that in both years. The second one is to implement a diversion center. The executive talked about this as well. This is to hopefully remove as many mentally ill inmates as possible from our county jail that can be held in least, you know, least restrictive settings. This would be residential, have treatment onsite, social services onsite in the attempt to improve outcomes for these individuals and reduce recidivism. This population, not surprisingly, has a high rate of recidivism. That investment is 2.5 million dollars. For right now, we're budgeting that in the sheriff's office, but again, that could change depending on how those plans work out. There is a rather large group of individuals that are working on plans for the diversion center that include representation from all affected county agencies and departments. The, sorry.
Dale.
Yes.
I have a question.
Okay.
You mentioned the funds for this won't be coming out of the general funds. Do you know where?
I do, I do. We are using part of our settlement money for this 2.5 million dollars that we have already received.
Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Okay. The diversion center.
First, President Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The diversion center, is that for the creation of a building or an existing building? Is this operational cost or capital?
This would be operational, the creation of a building versus existing building. It's my understanding that that's still being discussed. When the conversations began, I think we were talking about potentially rehabbing at least a facility. I think now we're looking at a site that is already functioning up and running that we could move into quite easily without significant costs. So this would be the operating costs. If there are any capital needs, that would be an additional cost that we'd have to talk about how to fund.
And this is just for clarity in, in language. I've been describing it in terms of prebooking, postbooking. Is that what this means, predisposition and?
So predisposition, for how I interpret it, means that they have not yet been found guilty or innocent, you know, so they haven't had a plea yet. So these are people whose cases are still working through the court system. They are, have been post-booked because they're already in the county jail.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So how does Metro play into this? They are there and under contract and I believe they're part of the intake of determining?
In the jail?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely they are.
Okay, so this funding that we're adding in addition, how is, I mean, what are they contributing towards that effort under contract versus what we're adding more to it?
So, I get, I get what you're saying. So we have not made any change to our assumptions relative to the Metro contract for medical services that are provided in the jail. Theoretically, yes, if you can remove the mentally ill patients, many of whom would be on psychotropic medication, which is kind of costly, perhaps the cost would come down for Metro in the jail. I don't know that for sure. I don't think they've gotten that far in the conversations and we certainly didn't want to make that assumption and cut the jail medical budget, but this would be in addition too for right now. So these are people who are already in the jail. Instead of going to the jail, they would go to this diversion center and they would get their treatment there and social services, which they're also getting in the jail right now.
And just understanding the role of Metro, aren't they in the position and contracted to identify those that have been sent to the jail to determine?
Oh, they are, yeah, absolutely, they are indeed. So the thought process with this, with this though, is that once we have identified who those inmates are, instead of putting them in a cell in the county jail, which is a maximum security facility, they can then go to this diversion center. So Metro would still be integral, I assume, in identifying this population.
Okay.
What role they would have in providing medical care to this population once they are in the diversion center, I can't really speak to that right now.
I understand. Okay, thank.
Of course. Any other questions?
One last question, Mr. Chair. Are there any dollars dedicated to prebooking, as I've described it? These dollars are all postbooking, someone who's currently in the jail and how we help those who have not yet been brought to county jail. Is there any prebooking dollars in the budget?
For, like diversion?
Yes.
Just regular diversion?
Yes.
No. This, this million dollars might be allocated to that population, but I'm not aware of?
The County Executive.
I'm sorry, if I may speak.
Yes, please do, sir.
The council has approved a consultant contract to study diversion and present a plan to us. We expect that plan will be delivered in the next month or two. At least that's what we've been advised. We are waiting to make decisions on how the diversion money will be spent pending the delivery of that consultant report. It could well be pre-arrest, it could be post-arrest, pre-sentence, pre-trial, it could be, you know, there's, there's a lot of different opinions as to when the best approach is to use diversion and we're waiting for the consultant report to give us their best advice based on best practices around the country.
Okay, so the, so the question of whether this funding is going to be for, for prebooking or, or postbooking, but prior to disposition has not yet been made?
Correct.
Okay.
But we wanted to make sure the money was there when this report is finished. This will be for next year.
Okay, thank you.
Chair Mayock.
Yes.
Just have a logistical question. Annual funding level, 1 million and 2.5 and 3.7, is that really 2 million or is that 500,000 and 500,000 for a two-year budget?
It would be 2 million. So the, this is the amount for one year. So all these are actually doubled. Mm-hmm. All of them except for the third one from the bottom, the amounts are different in the two years, but other than that, it's the same amount in both years.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Please proceed.
Any other questions? Okay.
President, Chair.
Yes.
Let's temporarily wrap up this discussion about the diversion center. You think it's fair to say that this is a work in progress, that there's a lot of people around town who are working on this and the county is, is working to, with them and so this is something that the county is working on, not something the county has a place, a plan in place for.
Oh, that's absolutely correct.
That would still be my opinion.
Yeah, there's a work group, everybody's represented, yep. Third line down, the common police court is receiving a total Third line down, the Common Pleas Court is receiving a total of 3.7 million in each year. That is for a combination of initiatives and additional expenses, including the creation of a fourth drug court docket. So we have three drug courts right now operating in the Court of Common Pleas. This fourth drug court would involve inmates who are more high-risk and who have repeat offenders. So right now, to be involved in our existing drug courts, you have to be a first-time offender, you have to have had a nonviolent charge. This drug court will address the people who are harder to reach. So I don't think it includes felony ones, I think we're talking a little bit down the scale there, but this will really hopefully attack recidivism because it is our repeat offenders that we want to get at. Our drug courts thus far, I don't have data with me today, but I can provide it to you, but they have been very successful in reducing rates of recidivism. So we thought that this was a worthwhile investment, and it's about 600,000, six or 700,000 each year for the drug court. In addition to that, we're providing funding to expand the use of electronic monitoring. These are the ankle bracelets, again, so that people will not be in jail and we can monitor them at home. It's about 250,000 or under 300 that was put in the budget for the electronic monitoring. And finally, the court has requested to increase its fee schedule for the assigned attorneys. These are private attorneys that represent indigent clients. The fee schedule was last increased in 2014, if some of you remember. The court had come here, they had requested funding to increase the fee schedule, and council agreed to do half of what the request was, and so now the court is coming back for that second half. I do want to point out that the increase in the fee schedule does not have a dollar-for-dollar impact on the general fund because we do get reimbursement from the state public defender, which has just gone up in the state budget. I am assuming 70% in year one and 90% in year two.
And what's the total number on the fee schedule increase?
2.7, okay. 2.8 million.
2.8?
Yes. It's a 40%.
2.8.
It's a 40% increase.
Okay. Fine.
Any questions, come in please?
Yes.
On the monitoring devices, are we still using those devices for those that are on parole? And the answer is probably, well, that's the first question.
Probation.
Probation.
On probation, but yes.
They are?
Yes.
And do we have a number of electronic monitoring devices that are needed in this? How many are we talking about and is it an adequate number?
I'll get that for you. I'm not sure how many additional bracelets this covers, but I'll get that for you. We have it downstairs. And I can also find out the breakdown between people who are on probation and who are predispositioned. I think the sheriff is working with the court on that.
Okay.
Okay. Continue.
The next one is for the public defender. The public defender is requesting three additional employees, two attorneys and a clerk, to handle the increase in abuse, dependency and neglect cases. I'm sorry, two clerks. To handle the abuse, dependency, neglect cases, individuals whose children are at risk of being taken from them are entitled to an attorney. And as the executive mentioned and as I've mentioned time and time again, the number of children in placement is increasing every week over the previous week. And this affects not only the Department of Children and Family Services, but also the juvenile court, which I'll get to in a minute, the public defender's office and the prosecutor's office. So there is a wide impact related to the increase in these cases, unfortunately. Again, this is reimbursable from the Ohio public defender, so it's not a dollar-for-dollar impact on the general fund. Next, we have a 4 million dollar investment in additional correction staffing in the county jail. This effort is already underway, as the executive mentioned. We are able to fund that this year because there was savings in the budget from vacancies because we've had such high rates of turnover. But next year, we are fully funding that in anticipation of our attrition rate coming down. This is funding enough to hire an additional 60 correction officers, which again is to reduce the incidence of red zoning in the jail.
Yes, please.
The 60 additional, what number does that bring us to if we're at a pretty high number now? Are we going to try and achieve an over amount of what's recommended, just to have the flexibility of?
700.
700.
COs.
And the recommended amount was, or at least the minimum amount was, what, 600?
It was under 700, that much I know, but I don't know exactly.
650, so we have a 50 fluctuation there. And wasn't there funding already put in place for additional correction officers?
We did put funding in this current year's budget. I think we added 2.5 million to this year's budget because it was only mid-year that we added, so this is the annualized impact of that increase.
And is it determined that we would have to pay more in order to increase the interest?
The corrections officers already have received a pay increase separate from the COLAs that they get as part of their bargaining agreement. I am not aware of any plans to increase the pay schedule again for that, but they already did receive a pay increase this year.
And this may not be a question for you, but having the funding to increase correction officers is one thing, but to fill the correction officers is another. And is there a strategy there to try and encourage that employment?
Yes. So again, you know, I would have to bring up HR or the sheriff's office to speak in detail, but I do know that they are talking about this. I think they've been meeting every Tuesday morning to talk about how we can recruit the correction staff, and I've heard a number of initiatives and examples that, because I'm not directly involved, I'm not going to say unfortunately now because I don't know if it's public, but I know they are talking about ways to make the position more attractive and ways to get the corrections officers to stay. So my understanding is that the way it works with this particular group is, you know, if they can make it a year or two, then they tend to stay for a very long period of time, but a lot of them burn out quite quickly, which is understandable. But I think we are talking about additional supports and training to make sure that we can retain them through that first period when they're adjusting to the new environment.
That was my follow-up. Does this money include training?
It does not include training, no. My guess is, if I can, you know, assuming that maybe the attrition problems won't be solved on January 1st, though, this is fully funding for a year, so some of these dollars probably could be reallocated to training, at least in the short term, and then we can figure out how we want to fund that on a forever basis. Thank you.
The amount of positive change they've achieved this year in the number of corrections officers suggests they've made some progress on the attrition problem. Ms. Brown?
I just want to correct the record or clarify. If we add 60 more, will that bring us to 735?
I think that the additional 60 is to get us to 700.
Okay.
If I might respond?
Yes.
So when council authorized 60 additional earlier this year, we were at 615, so the target was 675. It's appearing to this new sheriff that 675 will not be adequate to do all that we want to do, so we're shooting for a minimum of 700, but I've authorized them to just keep hiring until we don't need more. So we may come back to you at some point during the next year and say we need additional funds. We have to hire enough to not only fill the spots for the COs, but then we have to look at promoting COs to lieutenants and sergeants and others that we're also short of, and that will open additional spots.
All right. Thank you for clarifying.
Ms. Conwell?
I threw the chair to Maggie. I just want to clarify. So the number of hirers needed, is that based on the 1765 population or what we have now?
That I don't know.
Okay. Do you know?
Mr. Executive?
Yes. As I understand it, and I'm not an expert in jails, but the sheriff has explained really the difference in COs. Because of the structure, the physical structure of the jail doesn't necessarily change significantly whether you have 1,765 or 1,865 prisoners.
What really hurts this budget is the call-offs and overtime. So overtime, this is our largest unit that gets overtime payments. We did not adjust the budget for overtime, so I'm sure council's aware, but this group does have mandated overtime as part of their bargaining agreement. So about half of the overtime worked is guaranteed, that's not going to go away, but the other half results from call-offs, vacations, sick days. If we do, in fact, get our staffing levels up, the call-offs wouldn't affect us quite as much because the problem is when you have 40 COs off in a day or maybe even more than that. So there is a little bit of room, I believe, in that budget for the overtime that can be reallocated to cover additional hires before we have to really worry about how we're going to fund these.
Okay. Council, Vice President Jones?
With the 60 that we added last time from 615 to 675, if someone through attrition leaves, are we still, does this funding still cover that so that we can hire to 675 and also replace?
Yes, it does.
It does?
Yes, it does.
Okay. So really, we're hiring at a rate that has to be higher than the attrition to get the staffing levels where we want.
That's right. And it's because we still have some folks that are leaving that we have this, I don't want to call it wiggle room when we're talking about budgets, but you have a little bit of a wiggle room because we did fully fund full staffing for the entire year.
I don't know if it was just said, but do we know, and I missed it, but where is the staffing level right now? What number? Do we know where we are currently?
It's about 660.
660.
It's the highest number we've had.
Okay.
Yes.
For verification on the correction officers, are they, is this also taking into the Euclid or the Bedford?
Absolutely.
I know Euclid is--
Yes. But the Euclid employees are going to be coming back, so they're not going anywhere. And this budget assumes that all of those employees will stay employed with the county.
Okay. And the correction officers can go to any of those locations?
I think there's a way in which they assign people out there. I think it's seniority and maybe something else. I'm certainly not the best one to ask that question. Physically, yeah, they can go, but I do think there's a way in which they assign the COs to go to the satellite jails.
And that's included in the 700-plus?
It is. Yes.
Let's keep in mind, everybody, that the Department of Public Safety is going to be coming for departmental hearings, and they'll be better able to answer some of these detailed questions. We want to get the big picture at this point. Please proceed.
And next, we have again the sheriff's office. It's a 2.5 million dollar investment in additional sheriff's deputies. This is funding enough to hire an additional 30 deputies that can handle patrols, they can handle inmate transportation. So when we have inmates going between the satellites in downtown, they have to be transported by deputies. Similarly, if we have inmates going from one of the jails to a medical facility, they have to be transported by deputies. And this should allow for some additional posts in the Justice Center. The courts are requiring a little bit of additional security and making sure that we always have deputies onsite, so this funding will address that issue. And I cannot answer any questions about deputy staffing levels, I'm just going to get that out there right now. This is an additional 30, but I have no idea. Do you have any behind me? I don't know how many we have right now. I can find out. Next is the prosecutor's office. As I mentioned before, the abuse, dependency and neglect filings are increasing quite staggeringly, and this has created an additional burden on the prosecutor's office, who represents the county in all of these matters. So the prosecutor's office has asked for an additional funding in that division to hire more attorneys. There's a little less than a million dollars that's going into that division. They've also been hit pretty hard recently with turnover. I think they had 10 people leave within the last six months. And then we also have some money in the budget to provide equity-based salary adjustments to staff in the prosecutor's office. And that's 3 million in 2020 and 5 million in 2021. Domestic Relations Court had a relatively small ask, $93,000. This was to increase funding to cover the cost of outside counsel, so the Domestic Relations Court has a contract with one private attorney to handle cases where there is a right to counsel, and that has increased a bit. And then they also asked for additional funding for software, which was included in this budget. And finally, an additional about $50,000 was recommended for the State Court of Appeals to cover professional development, travel for the judges when they go to their professional development opportunities, software and publications. And the county is required by Ohio Vice Code to pay for the non-personnel expenses of the State Court of Appeals.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions? Okay. So moving on to the general fund, I have to put a bit of a disclaimer out there. So now that we're using our new system, we are fully embracing the new chart of accounts, which this current year, we have been doing everything by hand, and we have been making some adjustments in anticipation of some changes probably to the chart of accounts, but those are not reflected in these schedules. So for right now, what's included in the general fund are the activities of the title office when you get your boat and motor vehicle titles, that was formerly special revenue fund, that's now in the general fund. It's not a significant difference. I think it's above 6 million in revenue and 6 million in expenditures, maybe 7 million in expenditures, but it is included here. So for the general fund, we have an operating shortfall of less than about $5 million in 2020 and a surplus of about $1.1 million in 2021. The 2020 budget, recommended budget, does include a draw on reserves to cover our new investments in the areas that I've just mentioned, but everything does level out in 2021 and we have a slight surplus. Despite the draw on reserves, we're going to end the year with a cash balance of about 29%. The county code requires 25% in the general fund, the GFOA recommends 17%, so at 29% we are safely doing well in terms of cash, and that's about $15 million of surplus cash that's above the 25%. To Councilman Conwell, when you mentioned the ERP, so I'll get to that right now, we might as well. The ERP is not budgeted in 2020. The ERP, as everyone knows, is coming from the general fund. We issued debt to pay for that in 2004. Debt proceeds had to be spent by 2017, so we ended up doing kind of a swap where we found projects eligible for bond proceeds and then took that general fund money and put it in a reserve for the ERP. So we are still drawing down that reserve for the ERP. We anticipate a $7 million draw to finish that up, or Phase 1, finish it up, in 2020, but any additional costs for Phase 2, for the items that were deferred, delayed, are going to come out of general fund reserves. So that is not factored into the operating budget.
Can I ask?
Yes.
Why aren't they? If we know that we're drawing down for the Phase 1 and we do anticipate, which I think we're anticipating 2 or 3 million here in the next week or so, why wouldn't that be considered, knowing it's inevitable that it's going to cost us more?
It is inevitable because we don't know the exact amount, and the ERP at this point is now a draw on reserves anyway. So I didn't want to reflect a budget that showed a, you know, 15 or 20 million dollar operating deficit when in fact we don't have one. We had always expected that this would be paid from reserves because that's why we brought the cash in from the bond proceeds to pay for this project. So we'll appropriate it next year when we find out exactly how much we need, but that number, as you know, has been changing. I don't want to put a guess in there because it's been changing quite a bit, so we're just going to draw down the reserves as we need to, to fund that project. But that has always been the plan, so if you look back on any of the reports we've submitted for the last two years, we did have that reserve on balance for the ERP, and we have been appropriating it as we go.
So I understand, so the reserves, which is that were mandated for 25%?
That's correct.
So what is your projection of that 25% remaining whole if we start drawing it down for money that I think we all know is going to be needed?
We will still be above the 25% if we draw-- We will still be above the twenty-five percent if we draw down cash equal to what the current projections are for that project. So it's in here somewhere, but I think we're at thirty-three or thirty-four million by now. We will still be above the twenty-five percent if we draw down for the ERP. And that's only, hopefully, in one year. I mean, I think we're supposed to be done by the end of next year. Just
That was funny, right?
Not, funny not.
Just kidding. So the thirty-two that we're anticipating now, that will take care of, we will have enough in the reserves to cover that, but that may not be a realistic number. So where are we in that anticipation of 2020? I mean,
Right.
There has to be some, are we anticipating drawing down below the twenty-five percent if it goes beyond the thirty-two?
Well, it depends how far beyond the thirty-two it goes, but no, I am not anticipating that. A lot of the project, there, some of the project has been sort of prefunded. We do have cash in there to cover all the expenses that we expect to take place this year, and that's a substantial amount more if they, you know, get the bills paid as we expect them to. So next year, I think we were assuming an additional seven million just to get us to, before it went up to thirty-two million. So we are going to need a couple million more, but that is not going to take you anywhere near the twenty-five percent.
Okay. Good. Thanks.
And we'll obviously, I'm sorry, keep you very well updated on that. It is a big project. It's a kind of high-profile project, and I'm just not comfortable throwing a dart of what it's going to actually cost. And we have cash for it. This is why we have reserves in the amounts that we have them.
We also have those dollars that we're spending in our departments, right?
Yes. So that's a very good point that I, we are anticipating some savings, but they're nominal. So in fiscal IT and HR, we are anticipating some savings. If there's more, excellent, but we do have already in our budget some things that we're currently paying for, for the legacy systems.
That's right. And so you have that already budgeted for what you're going to have to
For most of them. For some of them, well, yeah, for most of them, we do, yes. So we should be okay. Now, the question is, I don't, it depends when next year we actually go live because we might end up paying for those systems anyway. Just if we go live in August, I would hope no one's going to take away our legacy system August first, too, because we want to be able to check and some historical stuff. It takes a little bit of time to get familiar with that new system. So we might end up paying for the year, but all of our contracts have an out clause, so if something happens earlier, we can get out of them.
Okay.
Thank you.
And we are still hoping that we're going to get some credit in, in Phase One for things that got deferred into Phase Two that, that we don't have the number on yet. An additional question. When we get the budget books tomorrow, are we going to see the familiar schedules that we're used to seeing that we don't see here where it lists, it lists the overview and what the total expenditures are and what the, the revenue is and what the projected plus or minus, yes, is that, that's in the budget?
Yes. And so I will know, that's part of why this has taken a, you know, we had some last-minute number changes, and it's a new system, and so we don't work as quickly when we're in a new system. We did, for the most part, recreate the new schedules because we didn't want to shock anyone with brand-new reports. They're slightly different, and I'll have a, kind of a note in the report that explains exactly what you're looking at, how to read it, how it's different from the old one, but they will look basically very familiar to you.
Okay.
And we have some new, exciting reports, too, to add to the schedules. But yeah, you'll see exactly what you're used to seeing.
Great. Okay.
Okay.
Please proceed.
So looking at general fund revenue, it is estimated to total four-hundred-and-seventy-four million in 2020, four-hundred-and-eighty-six million in 2021. Everyone's well aware, the largest source of revenue to the general fund is sales tax. I am assuming a three percent increase in sales tax each year over the previous year. Currently, we're at almost six percent year-over-year increase in sales tax, so I feel very confident with that three percent increase. It does allow perhaps for some dip in case there's something funky going on in the market, but I'm confident with a three percent. Property taxes are going to increase next year as well to the general fund because we have some debt that's retiring, and we are able then to reallocate our inside millage. If you remember, I talked about this when I brought the tax budget before you. So that's good news, and it increases again in 2021. We have more general obligation bonds that mature next year. Some other assumptions that are going into this budget, like I said, this does include titles, so revenue charges for services is higher than you would normally expect it to be, and that's because that's how their revenue is classified. I am expecting that increase in reimbursements from the state public defender, which will be wonderful. There is a caveat on that, that I hate to be kind of a downer, but if public defender offices across the state substantially increase their spending, that reimbursement rate is going to go down. So the state budget doesn't guarantee us seventy percent and ninety percent or eighty percent, ninety-five percent. The state budget gave a dollar amount to the state public defender, and he is encouraging public defenders to increase their spending. So I am being conservative with the seventy and ninety. Originally, it was supposed to cover up to ninety-five percent and then a hundred percent, but there's just, you know, if I turn out to be wrong this time next year, that's probably why. And we are assuming an increase in conveyance fees. Those are fees collected by the fiscal office. They are based on property values, and we've had a nice increase in property values this year, result, or last year from the appraisal. So I am assuming those fees are going to increase a bit. This budget does anticipate an eight million draw on the transition funds that we receive from the state to make up for our loss for the Medicaid MCO. And then we have some repayments from special revenue funds for advances made by the general fund to cover capital projects.
Director, after you draw eight million from the transition fund in 2020 and three-point-three million in 2021, how much will be left?
There'll be ten million dollars left, and for right now, the plan is to draw that down two and a half million dollars a year until it's depleted.
Each of the next four years.
That's right.
Okay, fine.
Any questions on revenue?
Again, the MCO tax, that was a considerable hit. I believe even just a year ago, we were talking about a twenty-five million dollar hit.
Yep.
So how is that, how are we doing with managing that with an eight million dollar amount of revenue and a three-point-three draw in twenty, I mean, how are we making up for the huge hit that was just a year ago we were talking about?
Yes, we are making up for it, and we're doing okay, is the short answer to the question. We've had some increases in, the sales tax is up six percent. That's phenomenal. The budget was two percent, so if we were at budget, maybe I wouldn't be in such a good mood than I am today. But sales tax has been phenomenal this year. We've had some other just kind of, you know, standard increases because life increases. And then remember last, I'm sorry.
The investment income has done very well also.
Investment income has done very well, and we did make some cuts in previous years in anticipation of that loss. But investment earnings this year, I think, are going to total close to twenty million dollars, nineteen million dollars. We are assuming a bit of a dip next year, but that has helped offset that because I wasn't assuming, or the treasurer wasn't assuming anywhere near
Right.
That amount for investment income. So we've had some good fortune that came with that hit.
It also appears we've partially moved from funding economic development out of loan proceeds and less, less out of general fund directly. Is that correct?
That's correct. This budget has no general fund dollars for economic development.
So in the foreseeable, foreseeable future, you don't see the MCO, sales tax, the, the elimination of that really making a difference in our
No.
fund.
No. I'm over it.
Councilwoman Brown.
I wouldn't anticipate that, that the investment income is going to look as attractive next year with the
We are anticipating
With the rates already having been announced by the Federal Reserve, having dropped twice, it's going to drop again.
Right.
I wouldn't think you're even going to be half of, of that growth, that increase or even more than that.
Well, but a lot of our maturities are locked in at rates. So the only thing that we're really worrying about are the ones that come due right now or next year that we're going to be reinvesting at these low, low rates. But we have some that are locked in that we know we're going to be earning some interest off those.
We did. And we also invested some more in commercial paper, which we haven't done. We've been pushing that on the investment, but I don't, I wouldn't anticipate anything coming off of fixed income is going to be performing very well out there.
Right.
And the traditional Ohio funding formulas are, are all dropping, too. They're dropping faster than the Federal Reserve, so I'm
I know. And I see that, and I get so excited because then we have, we have opportunities to do refunding for our debts. I'm like, oh, interest rates are at all-time lows, and then I remember, we get a lot of revenue from interest rates.
Well, I do hope that we're going to exercise the ability to, to loan some of our money out to communities and schools at a much higher rate so we could earn some, some money on that. I know that, that is, that's a program that which we have in play. It's been in place for seven years, so we haven't used it, but let's, hopefully, we'll start to use it this, this year.
What program are you talking about? Loan money to schools?
We have a ability to, to use funds to buy back debt from
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, yeah. You're aware of it, I assume?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any questions about revenue? Other questions about revenue? All right. General fund expenditures estimated to total four-hundred-and-seventy-nine million in 2020 and four-hundred-and-eighty-five million in 2021. I do want to point out that one change with the chart of accounts that we're working on fixing, but I just couldn't get it done today, is that for some reason, the legal and public safety entities are classified as miscellaneous. So you will see on this slide that miscellaneous spending makes up half of what we do. We are working to reclassify those so that we can be a bit more transparent, but that's why you see such a huge increase and also why the judicial is now only twenty-five percent. As everyone knows, that's usually well over sixty-five percent of general fund spending. We are assuming in this budget a two percent increase in salaries each year over the previous year. We are assuming a fourteen percent decrease in the amount that the employer pays for employee health care. So unknown if this has already been presented to the council in a HR committee, but we have, as I've talked about, you know, a hundred times before, we have quite a nice size surplus in our self-insurance hospitalization fund. I think it's going to be about fifty million by the end of the year. We are required by law to have only, the way it's been going for the last two years, about ten million in that fund. So what we are proposing to do is have a premium holiday for four pay periods, which means for four pay periods next year, the employer doesn't, so we pay per pay period on behalf of the employees. We're not going to make those payments for, for pay periods, and the employees aren't going to pay premiums for four pay periods. So that's good. And this will draw down cash then in this fund because there's too much cash in this fund.
Through the chair to Maggie. Will those line up? Will you have the pay
Same pay periods. Yes, ma'am. Yes. I don't know when. I think they're going to be in the beginning of the year.
Okay. But I'm just wondering if the employee's part and our part will be the same?
That's the plan, yes. For simplicity's sake, yes. So that results in a fourteen percent decrease in that cost for us, and that's in both years. I am assuming in this budget that the council is going to approve the agreement that's before it now to transfer forty percent of the additional bed tax to the Rock Hall every year for the induction ceremony. The reason I'm mentioning that here is I have budgeted for that payment to the Rock Hall. So if something, you know, happens with that, we have extra money in the budget, but I am assuming forty percent. I am assuming also that the bed tax is going to increase two percent each year over the previous year, which is a conservative increase based on how we've been trending for the last couple of years. Also, this budget assumes a refunding of the 2010 bonds issued for the medical part. Those are our big ones. I've been waiting for this for several years. So we are looking into that actually now, even though we're doing it early, but there, because the rates are so low, there's a potential to do, we don't call it advance refundings anymore, but an advance refunding and still save the county a significant amount of dollars. Probably with the medical mart, we will not do an advance refunding, but this is going to save us about three million dollars a year in debt service payments, and that is anticipated in this budget, which will affect the 2021 budget. And then just this last one, I'm just kind of noting, we are assuming that the general fund is going to pay for the trades budgets, which in the past, this has come up on fiscal items when we anticipate trade salaries will be moved to capital projects. They don't. We end up increasing the appropriation to public work, so this budget just assumes that we're not going to be doing those transfers, and we're going to be paying for those in the centralized custodial fund and subsidizing that fund. Any questions?
I should have asked this earlier, is that it?
Ms. Brown and then Baker.
Chair, just curious about the difference between the expenditures for 2020 and the We've got a four, it looks like a five million dollar shortfall.
That's right. So we're going to have to draw on our cash reserves to cover what we are proposing to spend in 2020. Operating deficit in the first year, we're balanced because total resources don't exceed. That's, that's, so sorry. I usually say balanced, meaning current revenue to current expenses, but the law requires balanced budgets means you have enough cash, total resources, to cover what you're planning on spending. And we do have that, so this budget is indeed balanced, but we do have what's referred to as an operating deficit in the first year, and we're going to draw down about five million, assuming that we spend to this level. And you guys are well aware by now, usually mid-year, I'm coming up here every quarter saying we have surpluses in some of our budgets.
Ms. Baker.
Thank you. Is the point-two-five percent, is that part of this general fund now? Is it no longer broken out?
Yes. It's no longer broken out. So it, we're working through that in the new system, which I did this mostly for me, but that's why I have this eleven-hundred and eleven-oh-five. You guys don't need to worry what that is. Eleven-oh-five is the point-two percent fund. I just didn't want to make any changes and then like blow up the budget an hour before I had to come present it, but we are working to eliminate that once and for all, and we have been presenting it as gone all year, this year.
Is the point-two fund, was that targeted for capital projects at, at the time that, when it was broken out, and now it's part of just the operating revenue?
That's right. So it was originally, well, it was originally operating. So when the commissioners increased the sales tax in two thousand and seven, there was no legal prohibition on the spending of those dollars, and they were combined. The two funds were separated in two thousand and fifteen or two thousand and sixteen, I believe.
Right.
It must have been fifteen because it was before I got here. And then the quarter-percent fund, which largely restricted to, I would say, economic development because it was the medical mart debt service, the hotel debt service, we were paying some of the cost for the tunnel between the garage and the hotel. We're paying for the room refresh out of that money at the hotel that's happening in a couple of years. So economic development, I would say, but there is no legal restriction on that. And so that's why we're looking to, I was looking to blend them. It was, it didn't make sense, reporting on separate funds. Legally, they are one and the same. We have our reserves still for the, you can see that we're still putting money on the reserve for the hotel, but we don't need to have two funds.
I, I guess the, the value of having two funds was just to target the capital improvements so that we can see that the capital improvements were coming out of that fund and knowing what budget we had for that, where now we probably, we don't keep track of that anymore.
Oh, we do. We still keep track of that. It's just in the general fund now, but we absolutely still keep track of capital projects. This budget includes six-point-eight million for the facilities capital plan in each year, and then we do still have the reserves on balance for the hotel, for the two thousand and thirteen bonds that were issued, economic development bonds, so they're still tracked here.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course. Anything else?
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Moving on to the levy. So any questions, general fund in general, before I move on? Okay. So HHS levy fund. We are projecting revenue totaling two-hundred-and-forty-four million in 2020 and two-hundred-and-fifty-two million in 2021. The 2020 revenue does anticipate, as I mentioned, a cash transfer from the general fund to balance this fund, otherwise the levy, the levy did have a operating deficit, and the cash balance in this fund is so low that we thought it prudent to transfer money from the general fund just to make sure that we're completely covered. And even with that transfer, again, we are well over the twenty-five percent minimum in the general fund. The code does require a ten percent balance in the levy fund, and we are not there. So this budget, as recommended, does not maintain compliance with that section of the code. The revenue increases in 2021 The revenue increases in 2021 because I am assuming approval of a replacement of the 3.9 mil levy. We've talked about this before, but a replacement keeps the same millage, so still 3.9 mils, but it does allow us to capture the new values. So as Councilman Miller had mentioned earlier, levy revenue is fixed over the course of that levy. But doing the replacement does allow us to capture the fact that overall property values increased by about 12%. So the value of a mil went up by about 3 million per mil. And so we are assuming that we'll get some extra revenue if we do in fact replace that levy. If we were to renew the levy, the revenue would stay at the 105, 105 million, which is what it is right now. So a replacement does let you generate a little bit more revenue. So that's the assumption for that. Oh, yeah, question?
The 4.9 million that you transferred from the general fund to the, the HHS levy fund, was that because if you had used levy dollars, you would have gone below the 10% reserve?
We're already below the 10% reserve. So the cash balance in the levy fund, as of second quarter, we were projected to be at $8 million, which is like 3%, I don't do math in my head, but I think it's like 3%. So we are well below the 10%. I am proposing this infusion of cash just because 8 million in the levy fund, I mean, anything, we can swing 8 million dollars and though it seems like an extraordinary big swing, kind of isn't because this is a $250 million fund. So I'm just trying to put the cash in there to make sure that we're completely covered. But even with that infusion of general fund cash, we are below the 10% in both years.
How long have we been below the 10%?
We went below in 18.
In 18?
We've been below all year and this year, 2019.
Just a brief comment, many counties don't even have a HHS levy fund. They use general fund for.
Yeah, absolutely, you're right.
To say this, I don't know that I, we even need the 10% reserve on the HHS levy, but just a com, just a comment.
Right, so I agree. I mean, obviously, first and foremost, we want to be compliant with the code, so the law comes first, but.
We made that code back in 2011.
We did, thank you Dave for each scan. But because we have reserves in the general fund that are quite healthy, we're 29%. I don't want to say I'm not worried about being below the 10% because I'm always worried if we're not compliant with the code. That's my first job, but I guess my first job also is to worry about finance. And I'm not worried because we have such healthy reserves in the general fund. And as you're saying, we are certainly permitted to take from the general fund and subsidize the levy if need be. We need to work, unless we are going to change the code, then we, meaning OBM and the administration, need to work on a plan to get us back up to 10%. That is also in the code and we are, we are working about that. We need to really talk about that so that we maintain compliance. But financially speaking, not considering the code, because we do have an extra 15 or so million in the general fund, I feel like we're at least covered for the biennium in the levy fund. We have a slight surplus in the levy fund in 21, so the cash balance is going to increase to about $11 million. So we're ever so slowly inching back up there and there's a lot of assumptions that go into the levy budget, particularly when it comes to kids in custody. And if we can trend downward or even like maintain, that will also swing these numbers quite a bit. I think we spend six, five or six million a month on boarding care. Spend $5 million a month on boarding care. So if we get fewer kids, that number will come down and just like that, our balance comes up.
Thank you. The, the 4.9 million dollar transfer, is that one time in 2020?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Councilman Shawn.
Yeah, you, you opened the dialogue, which I was glad you were, which was if we drop below the reserves in either one of the funds, that there's an obligation under the law that we will start to figure out ways to rebuild both of those. And what steps are we doing?
So at this point, I mean, we internally in OBM are starting to work on that, talk about that. I have to get with the administration because it's the administration that's going to put that forward, but we are looking into it. We are, you know, brainstorming any number of ways that we can readjust to operate within our means.
Because these laws that require us as a body to, to look at that and rebuilding both of these are what actually drives the investment community into our bonds and our bond ratings. So failure to adhere to the law that's on the books does, I believe, will result in lowering our bond rating, which will then cost us more money should we fail to, are these correct assumptions? And when we go out to place bonds in the future, if we cannot live with the laws we have passed?
The cash balance definitely affects the ratings discussion. And so we have been fortunate to have such high ratings with AAA for sales tax because we have such healthy reserves. The ratings agencies, I shouldn't say this, but they don't seem as particularly concerned about the county code as it relates to that 25% and 10%. Now, previously, we had never, now they also only look at the general fund, but we had never fallen before, so I hadn't had that conversation with them. We haven't been rated recently because we hadn't issued debt. We are going to be rated soon because I'm hoping to do some refunding soon. I still feel because of 25% balance in the general fund, we're up at 29. I don't see a dip in our ratings because of that, but absolutely, anytime you're not compliant with the law, somebody's going to raise an eyebrow like you're raising right now and I raise my eyebrow like that. We should be compliant with the law and we are working on, I forget offhand what section of the code it is that we have to come up with a plan. We will come up with a plan, absolutely, to figure out how do we adjust to fund what we need to fund with the resources that are available to us.
One of the things you do in a budget is you do some what ifs, what if, what if assumptions? And one of the ones that I have noticed now that the news media is starting to comment on are what ifs, if we start to lose business out of our convention center and out of our hotel as a result of the Q. And you can start to see those discussions taking place that they're realistically, when we were told the Q was not going to do this, we're now being shown that the Q is going directly after our business in both the convention center and in our hotel. Are you doing any what if scenarios in regards to that?
Yes, Councilman. I have been doing this since 2006. I do what ifs in my head every day, so we're doing plenty of them. And if the Q takes business from our local businesses or from the hotel and the convention center, that is going to have an effect on the county. Office of Budget Management certainly never said that it would not. So we get priority, what's called priority payments from the hotel, that is a portion of their profits. If the hotel doesn't have sizable profits, that priority payment is going to go down. It's supposed to be $9 million this year, which offsets debt service. Annual debt service on the hotels, $20 million or something like that. And we're only budgeting half of that because we do assume that we're going to get the money from the hotel. So if the hotel takes a hit, the county is going to take a hit along with it.
And that funds, those, those funds where the hit take come from where?
I'm sorry?
And where will those funds come from? The same general fund?
Yeah, general fund.
The same general fund?
General fund.
That you're saying?
Everything's a general.
Right, thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Just a comment on the HHS levy fund reserve. I think the, the fact that the HHS levy fund does not grow like the general fund does naturally, I think, I think that is, is a reason for having that 10% reserve. It, it gets you starting, it gets you to start thinking about the problem a little bit earlier. You know, with, with no growth, you can have adverse financial trends hit you pretty quickly. So, so that would be a reason for keeping that. Ms. Baker.
I agree with that point. The pressures on the reserve for the ERP that is not calculated yet. And then the levy fund, which 4.9 million now is going to be taken from the reserves. Is there any other large anticipated cost that could impact the reserves that we haven't talked about yet?
In 2020, no, but hang on. And I'll make sure too, that when I give you the schedules, I'm clear where the reserves are because we report them, but they're at the bottom of the page. So we do have a $7 million reserve on balance for the hotel. As I've mentioned before, I think, probably not today, but it's year seven or year eight, I forget. I think it's seven, that hotels have to redo all of their rooms. And so we are anticipating that beginning in 2023. And we're working with our asset manager who helps us estimate these costs, but they anticipate it's going to take three years to do that in its entirety. We do have a reserve fund for the hotel, a capital reserve with the trustee. But based on the projections that are coming from the asset manager, we think we're going to fall short. And that's what this $7 million is for. This won't be drawn, now, it might not be drawn on at all, who knows, might be more. But this won't be drawn on until 2023 or 2024, but we do have it there now. Because I want, of course, you guys to start thinking about that, that some of the money in the balance is accounted for. And maybe we could get other funding sources for it, who knows? But worst case scenario, hopefully worst case scenario, we're at $7 million for the hotel.
Okay. Go ahead, so, yeah, what else?
Okay, so there's another one. So if folks remember last year, I think it was last year, I can't remember, was this year? I hate budget time because I have like four years open in my head at the same time, but at some point in time, the county gave a $10 million loan to the Lumen Foundation, to the Lumen Project, Playhouse Square Foundation. We fronted that with Economic Development Fund money. And we told them, of course, when their money runs out, we will pay them back half of it with the general fund. So the general fund does owe the Economic Development Fund $4 million. That's not law, that's not set in stone. I'm putting it here because I want to be true to my word. Counsel can say otherwise and say, we're going to stop doing economic development. I don't really see that happening. And I'm looking at Councilman Shawn when I say that, so I'm not proposing or advocating it either, but that's what this is for. So that's another big one. We're assuming for right now, that's going to be in 2020, but you know, between us, I think it's probably going to be 2021.
So given the ERP, the levy fund and the Lumen and hotel, are you confident we can stay at that 25%?
I am indeed. So I have this calculated in the report that we're going to be sending you. We, with all the reserves on balance, we're going to be just under the 25%, but some of these reserves, and I talk about it in much more detail in the report, because you know, I'm not brief, they're not going to be paid out. We are required by law to have some of these reserves on the books, but I can tell you they're not going to be paid out. But we will still be above the 25%.
All right, thank you.
No, sorry.
Yes.
Should have stopped while I'm ahead, but that's assuming the ERP stays what we think it's, what we think it's going to. You know, that has always been kind of the unknown for the last several years. All right, thank you.
Okay, what, do you have a question? Oh. It, it's, it's not going to affect us in 20, in 21 to a huge degree, but farther down the road, there are the lawsuits out there that, that's going to be, we're going to have to deal with at some point.
That's absolutely correct, but I am not commenting on those at this time.
Mr. Chair? Just a final comment on the HHS levy. I believe that there's language that could be used that would allow us to recognize when we go below the 10%. But at the same time, put us in a position where we don't actually break our own law of going below the 10%. To Jack's comment of, you certainly want to be in compliance with your own laws. But I think there is language and we can discuss it at a later time.
Okay.
To that point, I think actually the creation of the plan, I mean, that would be a question for Greg or another lawyer, but the creation of the plan might be kind of that language that gives us a little bit of flexibility there because it does say, if you fall below, you have to generate a plan. And it doesn't say you have to generate a plan by this date and you have to replenish the funds in a year, but you have to regenerate a plan. Sorry?
It would not ding you for dropping below.
Right, right. And in every ratings conversation I've had so far, that's what we've talked about. And believe me, I don't take lightly that we're under the 10%. Aside from the financial issues, which I guess we should be worried about, think, again, I tell you this every time, but think of what we pay for out of this fund. We cannot run out of money in this fund, period. We have a nice reserve in the general fund that are our backstop, but nobody is going to turn to a foster child tomorrow and say, well, we're below the 10%. So we are taking this very seriously. Don't think we're not just because we haven't submitted a plan yet, but this, this is what I think about all day long.
We never say that, but in reality, what happens is there's delay in service. Think some people, clinicians, they'll post, they'll schedule people further out.
Oh, you're absolutely right about that, certainly in behavioral health. Weightless get longer, yep. And we don't want that. And you want to be able to, if, if we're going to have weightless get longer, you also want to be able to anticipate that. So people can know, you know what, in six months, it's going to be three months to be seen by a clinician. Right.
I just saw the opioid money, the dollars that are coming in to take care of those from drug addiction. Where is that in your thought process, especially the dollars that we've already received? How is that, is that in, does that go into the HHS dollar budget or how do you look at that?
I have been given direction to transfer 2.5 million to the sheriff's office for the diversion center and a million dollars to the Division of Children and Family Services to offset boarding care expenses. The rest of that, I, I don't know yet how we're programming those.
Wouldn't that be, I mean, that's a considerable amount of money. Shouldn't that be part of your overall, and there's more to come, you know?
Yes, but I don't have, I don't have that data. I don't know what we have received and I don't know what we're getting.
Let's hear what our county executive has to say about this.
Will be, we've been working with council leadership on the opioid situation. We are preparing an opioid mitigation plan and we will be likely presenting that later this week. And that will answer your questions.
Just as a, a comment, we'll, I'll start with a question, but it's more of a comment. Those dollars, how will they impact the ask on the HHS levy, given that much of that levy does pay for addictions? I guess I.
Again, I think if you wait till later this week, you'll have answers. The bottom line is that the opioid crisis is significant and the funds that are coming in are not anywhere near enough to cover our needs. And so I don't believe it'll have a direct impact on the levy.
Thank you.
Questions?
Let's move on. We're.
Okay.
We're getting late and we have a lot to go.
Okay. HHS expenditure, you're asking all the questions. We are budgeting.
How many of my colleagues want to be here at 4:30 or 5:00?
No, I have a, I have a class at 4:15, I'm getting out of here.
Okay.
244 million in 2020 and 249 million in 2021. Those are the budgeted expenditure levels for the HHS levy. Again, as I mentioned, we are assuming a replacement of the 3.9 mil levy. And similarly, as I mentioned before, 2% increase in salaries, 14% decrease in the employer costs of healthcare. And mostly what's in this budget are subsidies to other funds. This does take into consideration that we received an additional $14 million from the state in its biennial budget for child welfare. We saw 7 million of that this year, but next year, we're assuming there's going to be 14 million of that. Questions about the levy? Now nobody's going to ask questions? Okay, really quickly, because nobody wants to talk about, what's that?
I'm emailing you.
Okay, perfect. Debt, everybody's favorite topic. January 1st, 2020, we will have 1.4 billion in outstanding obligations. That's principal and interest. We currently have 24 issues that are outstanding in 2020. We owe a total of $119 million, 78 million of that is general fund. The general fund share, again, hotel and medical mart are the largest ones of the general fund. In 2021, we owe a total of $112 million, $90 million of that is general fund.
And why is it 12 more million in 21 and 20?
Sales tax, sales tax bonds increase in 21. The budget does assume that we are going to refund, as I mentioned, the medical mart bonds, hopefully bringing in $3 million. That's what we're assuming, it's a very conservative assumption for the 3 million. And we are looking at a refunding of any of our callable debt, which we have a couple more issues that become callable next year and even some of the ones that are not callable, but again, like I said, maybe taking. But again, like I said, maybe taking a little bit of a hit just to take advantage of the fact that rates are at historic lows. So this is a worst case scenario as it comes, you know, these payments are fixed, but it's possible that we could see additional savings if we are able to do refundings. And we'll have a really thorough, more thorough discussion about debt in the book that you'll get tomorrow. Capital improvements Plan, the county's required by code and should by best practice have a five-year capital improvements plan, which we do. Excuse me. Our plan is broken up four major divisions of public, Department of Public Works, that's the road and bridge, sanitary sewer, airport, and facilities. I don't need to read this, you guys can read it, but you see we're investing a substantial amount of money in capital improvements over the next, what I'm presenting here is two years, but we do have five-year plans that are going to be submitted to you all in the book, and you'll approve it as part of the resolution. In terms of general fund impact, the general fund does pay for the facilities, CIP, that's $6.8 million a year. That's largely to maintain our owned and operated buildings. And then the general fund kind of depends, but we're sort of on the hook for 10% of airport projects. But the Department of Public Works has been really, really good about getting ODOT funding to cover half of that. So in, recently, we've been paying about 5% for the local match. Okay. Any other questions?
On, on the capital improvements, just a comment to my colleagues that this is, this is a really big deal. It's a lot of money, and we're going through it quickly, and I would, I would recommend that people read through this section in detail in the budget book, and if, if you have further questions about it, to bring them forward later in the process.
So now I have brief updates on individual agency and department budgets, and just kind of a, a brief overview. What we've done this year with the budget, and you'll notice this throughout the budget book, is that we are deliberately linking our investments to the priorities that are in our strategic plan. So I do want to point out that when we have priorities listed for agencies and departments, that is OBM's assertion of what priorities are being met by this. We've talked to the agencies and departments, but I'm not going to stand here and say that they have, agree with all that, but this is what we're saying. These are, we believe the priorities that link to what these agencies are doing. So the first one is the Board of Developmental Disabilities. The board is actually going to approve its budget a little bit later this month. So we did submit numbers in the reso to you, but I am respectfully requesting not to present those publicly because the board is still working out its budget. The budget, based on my meetings with them, is going to reflect an operating surplus, which is wonderful news. The board in recent years had, has had years of operating with deficits. So they are now financially strong, back on level footing, and they're operating with surpluses. The board has been in a state of flux for several years as they work to transition out of direct services. That was a federal mandate. So you hopefully noticed in the books that we've been sending out, their staffing levels have been going down significantly, and their contracted numbers have been increasing because now they are paying for those services through contract providers. We are anticipating for the board that the costs associated with the Medicaid waiver match are going to continue to increase. The board has substantial cash reserves, they have over 100% cash balance. But we are anticipating that that is going to be drawn down probably in future years, not over the biennium, but soon after that because that waiver amount is increasing. The board does receive revenue from federal and state sources, but they receive about 105 million from a levy. So they have a voted levy, it's continuous, which means they never have to go back to the voters unless they want to change that levy. But they are also subject to House Bill 920, which means that that amount of money never changes, which does present a bit of a challenge for the board. And then we have their performance measures there if you want to look at those. Any questions about the board? Their staff are here. Next is the Veteran Services Commission. The Veteran Services Commission is solely supported by the general fund. That is a requirement of the Ohio revise code. They receive an amount not to exceed .25 mils. We have, for as long as I've been at the county, always budgeted them at the .25 mils. Recommended budget, $7.6 million in both years. That's based on the property values. So it's a direct calculation. As counsel is aware, Chapter 711 of the county code does require that surpluses in this budget are appropriated the following year in the Veteran Services Fund, which counsel manages similar, similar services, you know, still helping veterans, but the Veteran Services Fund is a little bit less restricted, which enables us to do things that the Veteran Services Commission can't do. Any questions about VSE? Next is the Law Library Resources Board. The Law Library receives no general fund support. They are self-sustaining, they receive fines and fee revenue. We are required by law to provide them with space at no cost, which we do. They operate out of the old courthouse on Lakeside Avenue. Recommended budget for both 20 and 21 is $540,000. I do want to note, because the Law Library has cash in its fund, if they were to come with a request to increase appropriation, as long as there's cash there and it makes sense, we would likely recommend that. But for now, this is what we're recommending, is $540,000. Questions?
Just one quick one through the chair. In terms of, I'm trying to remember the last time I toured over there, they needed some kind of updates or, or something, and renovations. Has that been done?
This is Kathy Sisala, who's the Director of the Law Library.
Good afternoon. I'm Kathy Dugan, and I'm the Director. And today, they came and deconstructed the front desk, and the rest of the week, hope to replace it with donations that we received from a local attorney in town. Okay, but thank you.
Any other questions?
I do have a question. It's actually on the Veteran Service Commission. I saw that, it said indigent burial is 100. So those, are those actual dollars or?
These are burials. So it's not $100. These are the number of burials.
Yeah, that wasn't my question. 100 are the number of individuals helped.
That's correct.
And they have been helped with a dollar contribution.
That's correct.
Money's given to an indigent family.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
What is that total dollar, if you know?
I don't know offhand, but I can certainly find out for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course. Solid Waste Management District, again, they receive no financial support. They are fully funded with fines and fees. Recommended budget, $2.2 million in both years of the biennium. Questions? Soldiers and Sailors Monument. The Soldiers and Sailors Monument is, the budget that's reflected in our books is fully funded by the county's general fund. They do receive grants and donations as well that help pay for some of their smaller projects. We are recommending a budget totaling $254,000 in the first year, $259,000 in the second year. Do you want to note that the monument did request additional funding to allow a seasonal part-time worker to, part-time intern, excuse me, to be year-round, which is recommended in this budget? The Ohio State University Extension, this is not a county agency, but we do give them an appropriation every year that is matched, and it has to be appropriated in the budget this way in order to generate that match. This is why we do that. We are recommending a budget of $223,000 in both years of the biennium. This is consistent with what they've been receiving for several years now, and they are solely supported by the Health and Human Services Levy Fund.
Chair, there's blank, blanks on my paper for what they do with the money.
I know, I corrected that to just remove it. But we didn't receive performance measures from the extension.
Did or did not?
We did not. The Board of Revision, this one, I'm going to have to correct the fourth bullet. Board of Revision receives no general fund dollars. They are fully funded by the county's real estate assessment fee. We are recommending a budget of 2.7, 2.8 million in the first year and 2.6 million in the second year. Board of Revision hears complaints relative to the property values. So we expect that they're going to be hearing complaints still next year, but then the second year, they should go down because we'll be done with all of the complaints that were generated by the second annual appraisal.
And how many operating boards are they going to have in 2020?
Why would you ask that? It's still blank. I don't know. I have to check with staff, and I'll report back in an hour. Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
As it relates to this, did any of these come before us and request increases that did not give them? That requested increases of us? No. Hold on.
I would just mention that, that the charter amendment that came out of the council that, that was approved by the voters allows them to vary the number of boards depending on the need, and, and this, this saves us money because
Absolutely.
because we can tailor the, the output level to the demand.
That's right, and that's why we're expecting a bit of a decrease in the second year of the biennium. Moving on to the Department of Regional Collaboration, we are recommending a budget of $266,000 in the first year, $271,000 in the second year. This department is solely supported by the county's general fund. There was an ask from this department, under $10,000, that was not recommended. And counsel's going to receive a list of all the decision packages that we, that we County Council, we are recommending a budget totaling $2.2 million in the first year of the biennium, $2.3 million in the second year. This budget is solely supported by the county's general fund. They did receive additional funding from a decision package that was approved by the executive for a new research and policy position. I do want to note, and I mentioned this before, but that counsel manages that Veteran Services Fund, and right now, we are recommending a budget of $547,000. This is based on the current projected surplus for the VSE in 2019. So this amount will likely change before we submit the final budget for adoption because we'll update our projections.
By historical standards, that's a pretty high number.
It has been higher.
It has been higher.
But yeah, recently, it's been about 2, 300.
But most years, it's been less.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
There is always some kind of budget surplus, though, in that budget. And then finally, we have the recommended budget for the county executive, $885,000 in the first year, $900,000 in the second year. County Executive's office is also solely supported by the general fund. Questions?
What is the budget in 2019 for the executive?
Well, I mean, just, I'm just I can tell you for sure in 15 minutes, but I would guess it's like $875,000. The only increase was for personnel. And actually, personnel might have gone down because this is a smaller unit, and that 14% decrease in flex might have driven it down. But there was, there's no anticipated increase in this except for the 2%. Thank you. But I can get you the exact budgets. Okay.
Anything else? The, we, we heard a lot today. I think, I think we got the good, the big picture. We, we appreciate the, the efforts of the, the administration, the, the OBM Director and all the staff that worked on this. And I think as we get into the departmental hearings, we're going to hear the details in, in a more granular fashion. But I think we have, have a good sense. The, the general fund has its challenges, but we've also have some positive things happen in the last year or two that is, that makes us more comfortable in, in this budget. And we certainly have challenges in the HHS levy fund with, with there being a lot of needs out there and the balance getting close to being depleted. So we're going to have to deal with this going forward. But that's where we are. Any further questions? Any miscellaneous business? There being nothing further, we stand adjourned. Thanks very much, everybody.